Mayor and council members, you are now live on YouTube and it is 5:59.
Okay, it's six o'clock. I'd like to welcome everyone to this virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council on Monday, May 10th. Tonight, we're starting at six o'clock because we have a closed session. Could call the meeting to order and could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Here.
Councilmember Carling?
Here.
Councilmember Kek?
Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Here.
Mayor Warner?
Here. So before we go to the closed session, there's an opportunity for the public to comment on the items for the closed session. And we have several conference with labor negotiator and three of those and one with the legal counsel. Do we have any, the city clerk, could you explain to the public how to participate in public comment for these things? And then tell us if we have anybody who wishes to comment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are using the Zoom meeting platform. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person regarding only the closed session items. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine of calling in. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. And Mayor, we currently have no public comments.
Okay, well, then I'll conclude the public comment period and we can adjourn to the closed session. So we'll leave this one and come back after the closed session. Thank you.
TV 30 standing by.
Aaron is 6:59 and TV 30 will count you in.
Thirty seconds. Okay, here we go. In five, four, three, two, one, and we're live.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you. Welcome everyone to this May 10th regular virtual meeting of the Livermore City Council at seven o'clock. We've returning from a closed session that we started at six. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano.
Here.
Councilmember Carley.
Here.
Councilmember Kik.
Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Here.
Mayor Warner.
Here. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. May we have the virtual flag here so everyone can follow me on mute? But I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we don't have any proclamations. So the next item will be the Citizens Forum. But before that, I'd like to make an announcement in advance of our May 24th meeting on, oh, city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to have a report out from closed session.
Oh, right. I'm sorry. Yes. I forgot that. Do we have the report out from the closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jason Aloncalli, your city attorney. No reportable action was taken in closed session. However, I do want to highlight that the conversation concerning one of the items, that's Conference Legal Council involving the litigation of Elmeade County Board Supervisors was not concluded, and we will reconvene at the conclusion of the rest of your agenda this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. So before I get into the Citizens Forum, I want to mention anticipating our meeting on the 24th where the Eden Housing proposal will come before us. And I expect based on the years of experience here and the most recently on the, at the Planning Commission and our other meetings, that we'll have considerable public comment. So I want to let everybody know well in advance that in order for everyone to be able to participate, it's highly likely we will be limiting the amount of time for the comment on the agenda item about Eden Housing. So the maximum time, like I'm sure now, is two minutes and it may be even less than that depending on what happens. So I urge everyone to prepare their comments very succinctly. You know, a minute target would be good. You can certainly consider going over there, but not over that, but not a lot. And that for those that feel the need to provide us with extensive public comment, please do so in writing so that we, and we do read all of that and it will be in the record. So I think for the benefit of all of us in this community, very succinct public comment on the 24th would be very helpful so that everyone has a chance to contribute. I also want to let people know that I also anticipate that this meeting will probably span more than one day. So just heads up everyone, and I'll make a similar announcement at the beginning of the next week as well. So with that, city clerk, would you let the public know how to participate in Citizens Forum for tonight's meeting? And then we can then proceed and then find out how many citizens want to contribute. I'll also say that we'll limit the Citizens Forum on this meeting to a half an hour if need be, and that we will then pick up the remaining Citizens Forum comments at the end of this meeting. So with that, city clerk, could you let people know how to participate?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are using the Zoom meeting platform. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine of calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand as soon as the item is introduced. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record.
Hey, do we have members that wish to comment?
Here, we currently have one hand raised.
Oh, okay. Can we proceed?
Amy Rose, please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Warner, and thank you, City Council. My name is Amy Rose. I am the Executive Director and President of the Board for Livermore Pride. This year, we request that the Livermore City Council consider and approve proclaiming June as Pride Month in the city of Livermore in perpetuity and raising the Philadelphia Pride Flag at City Hall for the entire month of June, this year and every year going forward. We at Livermore Pride would be honored to donate a flag for this purpose to the city so that every June it may remind us that in our diversity and inclusion, we are truly stronger together. We believe that it is important for us to adopt the Philadelphia Pride Flag because the black and brown stripes are an inclusionary way to highlight the black and brown LGBTQIA members within our community. In addition to this, we would be joining good company in our neighbors of Dublin, San Ramon, and Danville, whom have all raised the Philadelphia Pride Flag. We would also be happy to work with the city on a new proclamation in support of this endeavor. Additionally, we have submitted a request to the Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District to raise the Pride Flag at each school within the district this year and for future years to support our youth in ending isolation, bullying, and creating a deeper culture of inclusion for this and future generations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I've got an indication that maybe only the YouTube link is working and not the Zoom for people making comments. Is there, just want to take a quick second, see if there's anybody else who would like to comment?
Mayor, I don't see any additional hands raised.
Okay. All right. So if somebody needs to comment, we do want, want the comment. So there may be a technical issue here. So at that point, I guess I'll close the public comment. And we're moving on to the consent calendar. So we have, again, the issue with the draft minutes. So can I get a motion on 4.1 so that council member Banano may accuse herself? Oh, just a second real quick. I got another message coming in that says the link on the, on the agenda isn't working for people for public comment. Is there anything that we can do to deal with that? And it looks like the people on Zoom are not able to public comment.
Mayor, can we make a short break for about 15 minutes? We'll look into it.
You want to take 15 to do that? We could. And I do want the public comment. We could. Another alternative is could you be looking into it while we continue? Is that possible? And then we could come back when you think you've got the issue fixed and reopen public comment? Or is it better to just break now? Or can you do it simultaneous?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so we will leave public com, we'll come back to public public comm, we'll come back to public comment once the Zoom technical issue is resolved because there may be others that want to comment. So going back to item 4.1 on the consent calendar, can you get a motion on that? It looks like Vice Mayor Monroe, that you're raising your hand to say you want to make that motion?
I make that motion.
Can we have a second?
A second.
Okay, moved by Vice Mayor Monroe, seconded by Councilmember Carling. Can we have a roll call vote on item 4.1?
Councilmember Banano abstains for the record. Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kik.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye. All right, now we're on to the rest of the items on the consent calendar. Does, I think at this point, I'll ask, like, got a problem with the public comment. Trying to make a comment on the rest of the items. I see we may have to. Oh, I've just got to note that the link has an extra two at the end. That may be the problem. So if you can correct that link. Okay. Now, if we can't get the full public comment, then I can't proceed with the items is the problem. It's my. Was that correct, city clerk, city attorney?
Yes, it is. Mayor, if we could take a short recess?
Yeah, I think we're going to have to take the recess. Sorry about that. So let's make it, it looks like the people have discovered what the issue is. Let's make it 10 minutes. So let's get back in 7:20.
Just to clarify, we just have to leave. We don't have to actually leave the meeting. Just leave the, just, okay, thank you.
Turn your video and audio off.
Do not know that yet.
Mayor, we will not need any additional time.
Oh, good. Do we need another countdown?
Yes, sir. Just tell me when, sir, and we'll go ahead and count.
Uh, just so that we start at 7:20. Okay, standby.
Here we go. In five, four, three, two, one, and we're live.
Welcome back, everyone. It looks like we've resolved our technical difficulties. And I think at this point, I'd like to go back to Citizens Forum and see if there's anybody else who would like to address us before we get on to the rest of the calendar.
Honorable Mayor, we have one speaker, Michigan Ghost. Please unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello. A special thanks to Marie for fixing all this. My name's Roger Logan. We've been Livermore homeowners since 1988. I spoke with you two weeks ago regarding the offensive mandates for existing homeowners' language in the draft climate action plan after having addressed the issue with the cap on their Zoom call. The bad language mandating conversion of existing natural gas appliances to electric remains in the cap draft, even though the one May deadline has passed. Fortunately, as with most climate work, the world did not end as predicted on one May. So we still have until the day after tomorrow. We all care about the earth, but doing the USA's part for climate should not ruin our economy, nor does it need to. An ill-conceived plan to ban natural gas from Livermore involves many costs and hidden risks and should be nipped in the bud now. City Council needs to steer the cap committee away from the rocks and onto a smooth course. Many working homeowners in Livermore have no idea this is even going on. We are real people with real lives and can't keep track of the plethora of city committees writing with zeal about mandates that will waste other people's money. Imagine a homeowner 10 years from now. Their 25-year-old gas furnace finally quits. It's winter, of course. Maybe it's even rainy spell, we hope. It's pretty easy to swap out a gas furnace, but that's no longer an option, thanks to the cap squad in today's city council. Their gas furnace replacement will now cascade into a $75,000 expense. Even if they can tap their kid's college fund to pay for it, they are now faced with installing a solar roof and battery in the rain. Of course, no contractor is going to be sitting at home waiting to do that anyway. So they'll be stuck cobbling in some wiring and buying an inefficient electric furnace. Did I leave any issues out? Plenty of expensive and risky ones. I sent all of you a long email detailing the edits needed to the offensive language in the cap draft plan. The length of the email is not my fault. The length of the cap draft, 106 pages, is the problem. Let's fix this offensive language before it gives our entire USA climate effort a bad name. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yes, sir. Carl Wenti, please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Carl Wenti. I live just outside of town. Family's been here for five generations. I just want to express appreciation to those that serve the greater good of the people, for the people, by the people. So thank you to the City Council. Thank you to planning commissioners. Thank you to city staff. Thank you for people on commissions doing what you do. I just want to recognize how responsive the city staff is in every interaction I've had, up to and including saying that Zoom link does not work. Just another example, how you listen, move things forward. It's not an easy task of what you do to serve the greater good, this democratic republic, this experiment in what is good government. So may we all continue to have compassion and say that we are Livermore people. We are Californians. We are of the United States. We are brethren and sister. And may we continue to treat each other with kindness and may we listen with big old ears. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the, does the city clerk wish to make an announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let our residents who are still trying to participate know that they can clear their cache. And we do have a link up on both YouTube and on the city's website that they can then access the meeting. So if you're having any difficulties, clear your cache and then re-click the link and it should work for you.
Okay, thank you. One of the things I would want to say at this point is with respect to the processes here, and the previous speaker just mentioned it. The City Council cannot direct anybody to do anything without it being an agenda item and us taking a vote, et cetera. We don't get to just say we want something and it happens. So there is a process for that. And I just want to let the members of the public know that we're rational and will make sure that everything makes sense as we go through here. But realize that just because we receive an email, that doesn't mean we can take action because it has to take, be collective action on the agenda. We have to vote, et cetera. So there is a process and all these concerns will be handled in due course. Do we have anybody else who wishes to speak on Citizens Forum at this moment?
No, sir.
Okay, again, apologize for our technical issues here. And we will now proceed with item 4.2 on the consent calendar and through that. But I think before we go there, I'll do this, 4.2 and beyond. Does any member of the council wish to poll a particular item for discussion? If not, then I'll open a public comment on the consent calendar. I don't see anybody wishing to comment. Oh, Councilmember Kik.
I just have one really quick question about the signature. Will that apply to us too if we ever have to sign something? Would we be allowed to use DocuSign it? Or is this only for city manager and other staff members?
Would the city manager care to answer that question?
That's a great question, and I do not have the answer off the top of my head. I think it does vary by the type of action you're taking, and I'm not certain whether our city attorney has the answer on that as well.
Certainly. So the ordinance creates the opportunity to use electronic signatures for the city's business. It also allows the city manager to adopt a policy identifying when it will be appropriate and what technology will be appropriate for different types of activities by the city, and that's the accepted technologies. And then the section 2.64.030 in your ordinance. So there will be a policy document behind this to guide city staff's implementation of this ordinance. If the council had direction wanting to extend that to its authority, you could discuss that and give directions to Mark as far as crafting of his policy that will follow along afterward.
Thank you. I will take action at another time.
All right. So are there any members of the public that wish to comment on the consent calendar?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, close the public comment on the consent calendar. Can you get a motion on items four, two, and beyond? Looks like council. Okay, moved by Councilmember Banano, seconded by Vice Mayor Monroe. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Banano.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kik.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye, passes unanimously. So we're, no public hearings. So we're now on to matters for consideration, 6.1. The oral report and view graphs. the oral report and view graphs from the Director of Emergency Services.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. If you'll give me just a quick moment to share my screen and all right. Okay, well, we will start off with the numbers as we do, and the trend lines you can see actually are continued to head in the right direction very slowly. So of course, we are down at the end of the graph where any downward slope is very good news. And you can see here over the past several months that after a very sharp drop in February through the months of March and April, we have sort of been holding our own. But you know, that of course disguises that during that same time, we've had a significant reopening of the economy, significant relaxation of limits on both economic and gathering activities. So this is really good news as far as sort of balancing, sort of the reducing the restrictions at the same time that our vaccinations and other activities are ramping up. To get into a little more detail, our cumulative cases now stand just over 4,200. And our seven-day rolling average is just over two cases per 100,000. So that's actually a really good number for us. If you actually watch the county website on a daily basis, like some of our staff do, you'll notice that those numbers do bounce around a little bit, especially right after they come up. And what that has to do with is they actually get the raw results and then they actually categorize them back into place of origin because a lot of times a test given in the city of Livermore, while the vast bulk of those people are from Livermore, not everybody is, as well as the proper day. So getting them assigned both a day and a location is appropriate for there. So those numbers do change from time to time. Countywide, you'll see that our adjusted cases per 100,000 now stands at 3.7. And that number has been between three and four now consistently since we've moved into tier three or the orange tier. You'll see that that is still clearly within the orange tier. And we're sort of not getting close to the yellow tier numbers for the adjusted case rate per 100,000. But you'll see on the other categories, the overall test positivity rate continues to be very, very good. And our lowest HBI quartile test positivity rate continues to also be essentially to meet the standards for the yellow tier. So let's take a look at overall county vaccination data. And what you'll see here, and just a sort of a snapshot, is that while our numbers in the percentage of folks who are fully vaccinated in Livermore is now more than two-thirds of our population has one dose and 48% is fully vaccinated. And so that's the good news. The bad news is if you take a look at either the county average or other cities surrounding us, you'll see that we're beginning to lag, or actually continuing to lag. We have been lagging over the past several times that I've briefed you. And in response to that, your staff is ramping up a whole number of issues because now we're beginning to turn the corner from the issue being capacity to vaccinate now to basically interest in vaccinations. So at the council direction, we have updated our website to contain updated information, links as well as phone numbers. So for those who don't have access to a computer, you do have information on our website about how to actually use your telephone to get to that. Of course, that means that you have to get to somewhere like our public library, which the hours have returned to normal on every day of the week except for Sunday to at least get to our website, but that information is available on that. Social media, we've been pushing out a variety of posts about vaccine sites, eligibility, free and alternative transportation, access to health insurance, and our local points of distribution. We're sharing information from the school district regarding availability for local high school students 16 and above. And of course, we know on the near horizon, we expect that number for Pfizer to drop down to 12. The FDA has given their approval for that, and now that moves to the CDC director's hands where if past practice follows, the CDC director will follow the recommendation of the FDA and make the Pfizer vaccine available to those who are 12 and above. We expect that review to happen later this week. And of course, as soon as that, if there is any change on eligibility, we'll post that information to our website. In addition to the website and social media, we've been going very old school with a piece of paper, putting information out to a variety of service providers so that they have information so that they can hand this out to hard-to-reach populations. I'm having information at our library as well. Other activities, the direction of council at our last meeting, there were questions about are there any incentives for local businesses to make vaccinations available to their employees by receiving paid time off? And in fact, the federal government has done just that. So if you are a small business defined as fewer than 500 employees, so that's just about everybody except for the school district and laboratories inside the city of Livermore, you do qualify for an incentive that gives you a tax credit. So that's dollar for dollar for time that you give your employees off to go get vaccinated. So details are on the IRS website, and we've been pushing that information out to all of our local businesses directly and through our partners. We're coordinating with Stanford Healthcare and Valley Care to develop a homebound vaccination program. And this, of course, would augment the county's homebound program that they're working on as well, be available to all homebound individuals. And so that is in the design phase, and we continue to work on that. Although really good news on that front, as we reached out to our partners who service homebound, a significantly large portion of homebound residents who are using Meals to Wheels and some of our other services were already fully vaccinated. So they had managed through friends or family or others to be able to get to a vaccination site. So we were very encouraged by that, but there still are some who the major barrier is leaving their home to getting a vaccine, and we'll be working through those folks on an individual basis using all of our community partners as well as providing ultimately a contact point for people to reach out to us by phone or by email to get more information on that. We're also reaching out to our local faith-based organizations to provide up-to-date county information to share with their faith communities. And of course, we are designing posters and signage to communicate vaccine information, including a QR code to the county's interactive map displaying all vaccination sites in Alameda County. So if you were one of those who did not get vaccinated early because it was a real hassle to find an appointment nearby in a timely manner, the good news is that appointments are opening up much more readily right here in the Tri-Valley. And there are more places where you can go to get a vaccine, including your local pharmacy. So that information, links to that is on the county's website and of course, on the city's website. At our major points of distribution, Alameda County Fairgrounds has a new resident out there. Lucille Packard's Children Hospital is now using the Fairgrounds site to vaccinate students 16 years of age and over at the fairgrounds. Our local pods at Robert Livermore and Maynissen, we have given a first vaccine shot to over 6,900 members of the community. Many of them have also received their second shot. So and of course, they do get a special outreach once we've gotten a first shot there. So we do expect almost 7,000 members of Livermore to ultimately be fully vaccinated because of our efforts in partnership with the Park District and the School District at our local pods. You probably have heard that the Oakland Coliseum is slated to close on May 23rd, and demand for first doses has dropped dramatically from over 4,000 a day to just about 400 a day. And the county's strategy, as it is, you know, throughout the state now, is to transfer that capacity to local partners and local points of distribution so we're able to give those shots closer to home. But the Coliseum has administered over 500,000 injections in the time that it has been up and running. And that's sort of an extraordinary number. That's almost one-third of the over 1.5 million injections that have been given in the county of Alameda since the beginning of that process earlier this year. City's financial assistance continues to make progress. You can see there for each of our major programs. Overall, the county has, excuse me, the city has set aside $2 million in support for small businesses and residents in the community, set aside in a series of programs. In addition, the city council has granted authority to me to be able to redistribute unused dollars between those various programs to make sure that all of those funds are ultimately utilized. And you can see as we move down there, the citywide small business assistance grants program was in partnership, was actually as a part of our citywide grant assistance. In addition to that, we had $667,500 in the Alameda County Cares Grant Program. And of course, that was a one-time set of dollars where there was a county match and a city match, and those funds are fully expended. A little more than three-quarters of the funds set aside for our Gift Livermore Program have been expended. So there's still some dollars. If you have not gotten your gift certificate for more than 83 local businesses, we'd encourage you to do that now. Those dollars immediately go to the participating business, which is a great thing. The dollars now really are a benefit to those who are coming back out of this pandemic and funding folks by actually doing what they do. Buying their goods and services is a great way to get people basically fully recovered. We have a residential rental assistance program, and the distribution of those dollars are being coordinated with county allocations. And then finally, over $400,000 of commercial rent abatement matching grant programs. And you can see that more than $273,000 in payments have already been processed. Of course, on your consent calendar tonight, you had an extension of an emergency order. And these, we do continue to monitor all the way through the process. A large bulk of our emergency orders that were done when the economy were fully shut down will ultimately begin to sunset here on June 30th. So we have about a month and a half left for a number of our programs, which deferred fines, fees, and penalties, provided the ability to not comply with certain regulations. And those ultimately will be phased out now on the fines, fees, and penalties if you happen to be behind on something. What that means is by June 30th, you do ultimately need to work out a payment plan. You don't have to ultimately, for example, if you were behind on one of your utilities that the city has control over or a tax that you haven't paid that is due to the city, you are required to enter into a repayment plan. You don't ultimately have to fund all of that right on June 30th. Each of the folks who have taken advantage of those programs, we will reach out to one by one. So we'll be interacting with them over the next couple of weeks to give them plenty of time to let them know that some of those programs are coming to the end. Of course, in downtown, you heard more detail last time about our continuing work with both our retailers and our restaurant owners on the Flex Sun changes. Of course, the most noticeable change in the very short run is we're working through removing all of those temporary tents. Now we're probably over the halfway point. More than half of those tents have been removed. Umbrellas and outdoor seating now are sort of really quite visible in the downtown, so that's pretty exciting. Those tents do need to come down because we've stretched the state regulations on temporary tents about as far as we can. We do expect everyone to ultimately come into compliance with that. And we'll be working one-on-one with businesses on any changes to their outdoor seating areas. But we expect that we will continue more or less in our current configuration for several more months. Obviously, one of the things we'll take into consideration is the June 15th, you know, directive by the governor to return to, you know, essentially full operations and remove ourselves from the tier system. Depending on what, if any, restrictions on spacing or other things are a part of that, that may allow a lot more capacity for our retail and restaurant partners to move some of those operations inside or even take the ones that are outside and make them much more space efficient if people can be closer together. Today, the governor previewed $100 billion California recovery plan. And that includes a number of things, including the nearly $12 billion direct cash payments to Californians. Notes in that release that roughly two-thirds of Californians will benefit from a direct payment. Qualifying families will also be eligible for an additional $500 and is a significant, in fact, it triples California's previous investment. Overall, of course, this is simply a plan at this point. It still has to go through the legislative process. But this was developed in cooperation with leaders of the legislature. So we do believe that something that resembles this will ultimately be part of the rollout here. So while many people in the economy have done okay, we certainly do understand that there's a significant population of folks who have been out of work or in other hardship. And so the state program, along with the more recent federal programs, doing a significant amount to restart the economy. And with that, I'm available for any questions the council may have. Honorable Mayor, you're muted.
Councilmember Banano.
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. Are we planning any additional events at Maynissen?
Yes, we are. And all of our future events, both for first shots and second shots, are listed on our website.
Okay. And then is it possible to add to your just stunning set of PowerPoint charts a trend on vaccination? So we can see how that's progressing?
Maybe. It has to do with the overtime, how the county actually, how they actually share that information over time. But I believe that we could ultimately get some information so that we can get some trend lines on that. So I'll work with staff on that to see what we could come up with.
Okay, that'd be great. I think it would be nice to kind of see if there's, at some point, once the supply is not the limiting factor, we'll see if it plateaus to a number and we just got to figure out how to continue to work that. I know there's concern in the community that we are kind of plateauing, and I think we need to do what we can to make sure people, you know, have the opportunities. I think the things you listed sound very, you know, it seems like there's few excuses to not get a vaccine at this point for those that want it. And just seeing those trend lines at our meetings, I think, would be helpful for us to get a picture. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
So pursuing the question of vaccines, so I have a couple of questions. What it sounds like is that we are in good shape for offering vaccines in one way or another to anybody who wants to get it. The wait, the accessibility is greater now. There's no wait lines. The modes of signing up for that are greater than in the past. We're reaching out. We're now moving down to into the teen years with vaccine availability. Hopefully, that'll, you know, continue to move down. So that leads me to the question of what, how can we start thinking about opening up on June 15th? And given the fact that we need to be thinking about herd immunity with vaccinations, if we all open up, you know, if we open up on June 15th, what happens with those people who aren't vaccinated? And that may not be that question you can answer, but it's certainly the first one on my mind.
So one of the issues, and you'll note that the opening on June 15th had two significant caveats. You know, one was widespread availability of vaccines to all who wanted it. And the other was that trend lines were and remained essentially very positive for hospitalization rates and other serious reactions, especially for those who are vaccinated. You know, and I think that during the coming, you know, roughly month that we have, I think the state's going to be really taking that into consideration to see where we are. While it is important for us to concentrate on Livermore because we have at least some influence over what happens there, the larger issue is what happens throughout the entire state and throughout the country. And then, of course, you know, international travel happens as well. So I think we are going to have a noticeable period of time when, you know, at the very large scale, even if we are lucky enough, you know, to be like, you know, more communities that have higher vaccination rates here in town, I do think we have, you know, some continuing challenges because, you know, vaccines don't know borders. We know that from the entire endeavor we've had here. So I think it's incumbent on us to do what we can and then also to be very transparent about information as things change.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carling.
Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, thanks for that report again, Mark. I, I know I'm sure that we're all disappointed that Livermore continues to lag. And I was just wondering, two things. One, have we ever you or your staff looked at other things that communities have done to get the word out? Is there something we could learn from other communities that would reach more people? And the second question was with respect to additional posters and signage, I agree with that. And I just wondered, is there a banner we could put across Fourth Street like we did about masks? That would provide the kind of information, I mean, like a phone number, for example, that people could call to get information about it? I mean, sort of, how can we get it in front of people in additional ways?
No, I think that's a, that's a great suggestion. And in fact, many of the things that you saw on our two-page list there were directly borrowed from or inspired by others, communities that have had challenges in their vaccination rates. You know, communities that are more economically diverse have done that. And, you know, people, some people are getting incredibly creative, including the County of Fresno, which is now giving gift certificates. We've heard of some communities partnering with their local businesses. One of the most ingenious was the get a shot and a beer. So sort of a different meaning to, you know, a shot with a beer chaser. So I think at some point, we'll continue to see what we can do to both get the word out and to be as creative as we can. So we are reaching everybody who does want to get a vaccine and, and maybe has just sort of not gotten around to it.
Thank you.
Okay, I've, I've got a question. To what extent have we gotten our arms around the new federal relief efforts? In particular, I think I saw an article with the, the federal government is going to be giving grants to make up the losses for restaurants that they incurred. Have we figured out what's going on there and how that impacts what we're trying to do to help our businesses?
So we are monitoring that significantly. So the, the, the top level where the goal is set, the budget is set, and the big, great, big parameters are set, happens really quickly at the federal level. And then it takes a while for that to get turned into the regulations, the application form, and all of those items. So Adam Van De Water, our director at the Office of Innovation and Economic Development, and his staff basically track those things almost on a daily basis. And then we reach out with that information. The last time we checked on that, which was, was last week, and I'll have Adam here give an update in just a second. That portal for that help had not opened. And so we had told everybody it was coming, got them all ready to go, but it wasn't quite open. And Adam, what's the latest on especially that program to help restaurants?
So the Restaurant Revitalization Act, and again, Adam Van Water, your Director of the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. The Restaurant Revitalization Act did open its portal just last week. The Chamber, the Livermore Valley Chamber and Livermore Downtown, Inc., both held webinars with Livermore Restaurants to make them aware of the application process through the Small Business Administration. In kind of very summary form, it takes the delta between your pre-COVID gross receipts and your COVID gross receipts minus your paycheck protection program loans from the federal government last year and can make you a hole on the balance. So it's a substantial amount of funds for the right eligibility requirements. And I'm grossly summarizing there. But the application portal is open. So if there are any businesses listening, excuse me, there are recordings of those webinars, both through the Chamber of Commerce and from Livermore Downtown, Inc. And we can post those available on our website.
In addition, if anybody in the community does have questions about that, they can give us a ring at the city and, and economic development can point them in the right direction. We do have that information on, on the website. And it's not just restaurateurs. There are a lot of programs out there, one in particular to help the arts, which, you know, we've cooperated with LV PAC to make sure they and other of our arts groups are aware of those. And they're moving through those processes. So, you know, I, I think our challenge, as you correctly note here, is to make sure that people are aware of all the various programs. And we have a summary of those on our website with links to point people in the right direction.
So perhaps at the next update, you could kind of tell us how the new programs interact with what we've already done. And I'm getting the impression that in many areas, the sense of urgency on our part now is waning because of the federal assistance coming in. There, we do have a concern, though, that there are still people that are going to need help to bridge the time from now to when the federal assistance comes to them. But given that we have limited funds and new funds are coming in, perhaps the, the next meeting or the one after that, you could give us an update as to how the new programs are impacting our thinking as to what we need to do in the future, if anything.
Absolutely. I think that's a, it's a great point. Our local programs very much give dollars during a time when the federal and state resources were relatively limited. But as you note correctly, both the states and the feds have, have changed and their tactics and added to what they initially did. And so there's some significant programs out there with some significant dollar values in them. And so we can absolutely bring back a quick summary of those across a wide range of topics from rent assistance to business assistance to restaurant assistance to arts assistance. There's a number of large programs out there. And we'll also have a little more information about where the state program sits in the legislative process to be able to give you an update on that as well.
Yeah, thank you. And the question is, what do we need to do, if anything, now going forward with respect to our own assistance programs? But I have the impression that we helped fill a critical gap. And now the state and federal governments are coming in to provide even greater help.
Yes, nice to have the cavalry with deep pockets.
Yeah, but you gotta get, you gotta survive until they get there.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions on item six, six one? I see none. Do we have any public comment on six one?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, close the public comment on that. And we're right onto item six dot two. A discussion and direction regarding our FY twenty nineteen twenty-one and FY twenty-one twenty-three city council goals and priorities. And could we start with the staff report, please?
Absolutely. Honorable Mayor Mark Robb is your city manager. And I'm going to introduce Christine Martin, your deputy city manager, who's going to give you a brief overview of both our wrap-up of our goals last time and our work programs for the coming two-year period.
Thank you, Mark, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I am Christine Martin, your deputy city manager, here to present the closeout of the twenty nineteen twenty-one goals and priorities and introduce the work plans for the twenty-one twenty-three goals and priorities. And on the first slide, you'll see a recap of your nineteen twenty-one council priorities. You had five. And on your, at your March first priority setting, you chose to continue to move forward with four of those five, five goals. And you chose, no, I'm so sorry. Let me correct myself here. You, you decided to not move forward with the emergency management and public safety and encouraging an innovation-driven economy as those, those goals and the work that we have done on those goals have now been incorporated into everyday operations for the city. And, and, and those have just become a part of operations. So at your March first workshop, you selected to move forward on asset management, downtown, and homelessness and affordable housing. And so this evening, what I would like to do is talk about the emergency management and, and innovation economic priorities and highlight some of the accomplishments over the two-year period as we close those two items out. And then move forward with your new priorities and the work plans that we have put together based on your feedback at your March first workshop. So with the next slide, you'll see that, again, this is the closeout of the two goals I just mentioned from nineteen and twenty-one. And we have made several significant accomplishments in both of those work plans over the two-year period. And I've just put a few of those accomplishments on the slide for your viewing this evening. But in your packet in attachment one, you have the full work plan for all of the fiscal years, twenty nineteen twenty-one goals and all of the accomplishments in those work plans over the two-year period. So again, those are just a few of the highlights of the closeout of those two goals. And on the next slide, we'll move into what you approved at your workshop on March first to move forward into the twenty-one twenty-three budget cycle. And those are the five goals you see on the slide. Asset management, adding a stormwater component, downtown implementation, the general plan update, homelessness and affordable housing, and modernization training and workplace enhancements. As you'll recall, at your March first workshop, you received presentations on white papers on nine potential work areas. And council ultimately selected the five that are on this slide as your fiscal year twenty twenty-one twenty-three goals and priorities. Since March, staff has been working to create the two-year work plans for each of those five goals. And those are in attachment two of your packet this evening. It is worth noting that the work plans are milestone oriented and in that they do not include all of the various individual steps that may be involved. But, but more, they are oriented toward those milestones so that every six months we can report on the progress that we are making on those five goals. So with that, let me get into those, those five goals. In the next slide, you'll see your first one is asset management. And the way the next slides will go, if it is a goal that is being carried forward into this two-year cycle, you'll see that we've included just a couple of highlights and accomplishments from the previous two-year cycle. And then underneath that, you'll see the proposed work plan. And you'll see just the broad categories. And underneath each of those categories, for example, in asset management, here you'll see there are four work plan areas. In your attachment this evening, you'll see even more detail under each of those four areas. So with asset management, the objective is to establish a comprehensive asset management program with a focus on stormwater, ensuring that the community continues to receive vital services through a sustainable infrastructure strategy. And in nineteen twenty-one, the previous two-year cycle, a couple of the highlights are that the camp, the Asset Management Community Committee did meet and re, re-extend or extend their term through December of twenty twenty-two, and they also updated their rules of procedure. Also, the asset management staff and camp worked together to develop a communication and outreach strategy, also with the help of a consultant. And on the proposed work plan, those efforts will continue. We'll continue working on a community engagement with the camp. And the consultant will work on asset data, data collection and analysis, stormwater management, and fiscal sustainability, which includes your current direction of setting aside dollars in a reserve, but also exploring additional funding sources. And the next slide is the downtown. And again, this is a goal being carried forward. So you'll see some highlights, just a few of the things that were done in the previous two years, like Stockman's Park and Veterans Way. And then you'll see the proposed work plan, which includes continuing on the hotel and public infrastructure, implementing parking and circulation programs, Livermoreum Plaza, and additional enhancements. And with the next slide, you have the general plan update, which is a new goal for this coming fiscal year twenty twenty-one twenty-three. So you obviously don't have any accomplishments from the past. But you do have an extensive proposed work plan. And the, and the objective of this goal is to comprehensively update the Livermore general plan, including the housing element and programmatic EIR to address changes in regional and state policy, market trends, and community preferences to plan for growth and conservation for the next twenty-five years and support and enhance Livermore quality of life. And you can see there in the proposed work plan that there are several work items going all the way from finishing up on our project team formation. As you know, we've selected a consultant to help us with this effort all the way down to completing the, the environmental impact report and bringing the item forward for hearings. So there's lots and lots of work that will be done in the two years to, to accomplish those goals. And that work plan is outlined for you. On the next slide, we have a continuing goal, homelessness and affordable housing. It's been a goal for several cycles now. This is a goal to establish a homelessness strategy, engaging local partners to develop a coordinated response and expand diversity of affordable housing opportunities. And some of the highlights of accomplishments in the previous two-year cycle were your work with your homelessness subcommittee, meeting several times with the community and, and your community partners on homelessness to develop and implement short and medium-term strategies. The Chestnut Family Project has been complete. The Vineyard Project received entitlement approvals. And ongoing administration of our inclusionary housing and down payment assistance programs, just to name a few of the highlights over the last two years. Your proposed work plan continues the implementation of several of those work plans, including continued work with the homelessness subcommittee on the homeless strategic framework and looking at long-term, long-term work, work programs and the development of affordable multifamily projects, including Avon Say, for example. And creating affordable ownership opportunities and working with our regional partners on regional housing opportunities. And our next slide is our last goal. Last, but certainly not least, is our modernization training and workplace enhancements. This is a new goal for this two-year cycle. And the objective here is to develop a systematic approach to modernizing the city's aging business systems, reviewing processes for alignment with industry best practices and providing our workforce with the tools and training necessary to effectively deliver services to the community. This proposed work plan has five major work areas. That is governance and process improvement, modernize key business systems, training, including program and governance, IT and cybersecurity, and facility improvements. And with that, staff is seeking any feedback that you may have on the closeout of the old goals and the work programs that are being proposed in the coming two-year cycle. And that concludes staff's presentation. And we are available for any questions you may have.
Okay, I think before we go to questions, I might see, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close the public comment and we'll go on now to the council questions. Councilmember Kik.
Thank you for that, Christine. For people listening, those few slides did not give nearly as much information as our packet does. If you're interested, the packet's really informative. I wanted to focus on the modernization training and workplace enhancements. It's very, very thorough. And it was really good for me to see everything that's being worked on here. So I had a couple suggestions that I wanted to direct to our administrative services director, Douglasio. Similarly to the question I asked about the consent calendar, I'm hoping that we can make sure that when we do any modernization that we're always including any elected and appointed officials so that we're all on the same page. That goes for, you know, something as simple as a signature, but also for some of these trainings that I'm reading about, if we can, you know, work that in, in some way to make sure that, you know, advisory bodies, for example, would also have access to the same trainings, that we as elected officials would have access to the same training. So we can make sure that we're always all on the same page. And another, just, you know, you can answer that question if you can. That's, that's a possibility. I also really appreciated the acknowledgement of impending brain drain. You just look at the age of our organization and the age of the people working in our organization, we are coming to a turning point. Or we're probably going to start to see a lot of turnover in the next decade. And I think getting on top of that and working to mitigate that brain drain and make sure we're like really focusing on, on systemizing best practices so that Livermore can continue to do great work decades from now, even when many of our managing managers get to retire. Just thank you for making that a priority. And then, you know, if you can answer, is it possible to include? And then, you know, if you can answer, is it possible to include us and advisory appointees in your training modernization plan?
Thank you, Councilmember Kik. We certainly can include that piece. Your Administrative Services Director, Douglas Alessio, is available this evening to answer that more directly if you would like to know how we would incorporate that, but we certainly can do that.
Great, thank you. Just keep it in mind so that we get included as well. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilmember Banano.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Martin, for that report. Really great to see all the work that's been done. I want to talk about a couple of the goals, a couple of questions, and maybe a comment or two. So on the asset management and stormwater management priority. So we set this during our session on setting priorities with the idea that stormwater in particular was a risk area with respect to a lot of things that are being put in place with strict regulation without any funding. We also felt like there's vulnerabilities since we have two arroyos in town that have caused problems in the past. So what I'm trying to understand is there's a lot of individual milestones in the plan, but I'm trying to understand what we expect, where we expect to be in two years after we've made this priority, spent these dollars, accomplished some of these milestones? What is our risk position? What is our sense about? The other piece of this, we were emphasizing this area by putting dollars behind it as well as making it a priority in order to be able to go after additional funding sources to help us cover, make the system more robust, and to try to do it with funds that may be available that we haven't tapped into. So I'm just trying to get a picture, an integrated picture of where we expect to be. How much better do we expect we'll be with respect to a risk position? And just understand, you know, what also, there's a lot of, lots to happen in two years that sort of gets us better planning, better data, but it doesn't look like we're making a lot of improvements to the systems during these two years. And how are we positioned between now and the end of the two years with respect to a heavy rainfall season? We might get one or two more seasons before we've made some of the improvements that we hope we'll be able to make. So I just want to understand a little bit what we're going, position we're going to be in for the next two years and where we expect to be after the two years where we've emphasized this as a priority area.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Banano. And for a more detailed answer than I could provide, I will ask our Public Works Director, Scott Lamphier, to answer your question.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Yes, Councilmember Banano, we do have a plan to make a lot of progress in the next two years. There's sort of multiple facets that we need to consider. The first is making sure that we understand the stormwater system that's in town and also areas that lead into town as they work in unison. And so by gathering as much data as we can, we're able to, we're better able to determine where the high-risk areas are based on past performance and some modeling that could be done. And once we gather all that data, we can then identify specific projects that would help alleviate the highest risk in the high liability areas to prevent events from happening that have happened in the past that have caused the city some issues. And what goes along with that is identifying a specific staff person in the Public Works Department that would lead this effort. And due to our current circumstances, we're not going to actually hire somebody. What we're going to do is use a consultant-based process to better define what that position will be. And during the course of that position development, we will also be able to develop the stormwater management program. So when we actually are able to bring someone on board, we've got the system in place. But to answer your question about where we'll be within the next two years, we will have better data. We will have a program in place that is specifically designed to identify high-risk areas. And we will also be better aligned to identify funding sources based on the available programs, both locally, federally, and on a state level. There is some effort being done with one of our partner agencies, Zone 7, that is currently doing a flood management plan. And a part of that plan includes identifying such projects as we're discussing now. And having those projects identified in a regionally-approved plan, such as the ones Zone 7 is putting together, will help leverage our ability to compete effectively for higher-cost grants that the federal government and the state government may offer. So in a nutshell, we'll be, we'll have better data, we'll be more positioned to identify the high-priority projects, and also have a better sense of our funding availability for a wide variety of programs.
Councilmember Banano, Mark Roberts, your City Manager. You're pointing out, however, one of the things we won't have, which is we will not have solved our flood risk issues during the coming two-year period of time. This process took us about a half-century to get into the position we are in, and we are likely to see the first large-scale, what you'd call, field or construction projects three or four seasons from now due to both making sure that, you know, we have $100 million or more worth of total work to be done on the system. And we want to make sure that we're doing the first investments of that in the areas that will provide the maximum benefit. We do have an idea. Anybody who's lived in town for a little while knows what areas of the community flood during extremely heavy rainfalls. The circumstances haven't dramatically shifted during the past few years, but we see patterns which are going to get worse over time. So we do know that some courts in Springtown flood, some areas down near the golf course flood, and we would expect that to happen if we were so lucky to have an extremely wet next year. And so from that perspective, I think that, you know, our work is essential and very timely, but we still have several seasons of risk between now and actually fixing the problem. At the same time, the problem is of such a scale, we want to make sure we're deploying our resources in exactly the right spot.
That's great. Thanks to both of you for that. You asked my question better than I did. You know, my, just to finish this one, I do have a few more questions. What I'm interested in is understanding, is our conveyance system large enough? You know, are the pipes, are the aperture of the pipes big enough for the events we think we're going to be dealing with going forward? Is it a matter of debris in the channels, size of the pipes, combination of both? You know, how do we get to really understanding what we have to address? And then, of course, is the issue of money. And I know that's the asset management fund milestones you have there. We're going to start putting this all together. But right now, it's a lot of pieces. It's hard for me, and I'm fairly familiar and experienced with the asset management program. I think members of the public and maybe even other council members, you know, it's hard to see the whole picture just when you're looking at the pieces. The other thing I wanted to add about that one is the next-gen system, as I understand it, you know, could be really, really important. And the way I understand that system, it's actually, it's going to do everything. It's going to sort of bring together everything we've done so far in this program, including taking real-time data of the condition of all the pieces and parts of our infrastructure, and put it into a system that will actually also lay in over some of our risk analysis that we did previously, policies that have been adopted by the council. It will ideally, if it works as designed and as advertised, it will actually give us answers that we'll have to sort of validate, but it'll tell us what we should work on and when. And it'll also, you know, allow us to hopefully better use our money and have a better quality of system and the outcome. So I'm very anxious to follow up on that system. It's never quite as easy as it sounds, but that system could be the thing that sort of weaves together a lot of what we've spent a lot of time and money on today. So I'm looking forward to hearing about that. That was more of a comment than a question, unless there's something you want to say about that. Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just going to add that the next-gen in and of itself will not likely give us answers. It will give us scenarios to which your council and city leadership can make the best-informed decisions based on the data that we're able to provide.
It'll help guide us toward the answers. Okay, I have two more really quick things, if you don't, if nobody minds. One is on the general plan, which is a really impressive scope of work. And I now understand why this is something that takes two or three years. We have contemplated, or we've talked about some new elements that we might possibly add to the general plan, chapters that aren't there right now. Will we, will those be considered by the committee, by the advisory committee? And then they'll be brought to us periodically for approval? Would chapters or elements be put into the plan that we hadn't? I'm guessing the answer is no, that we hadn't advised and agreed to? That'd be something that comes back to us.
Councilmember Banano, that's another great question. And I'm going to introduce your Community Development Director, Paul Spence, to answer that one.
Good evening, Councilmember Banano and Mayor Warner and other council members. So we will have a comprehensive process. We will do public outreach. We'll have a steering committee. We'll gather information from those processes and periodically bring you back draft concepts or information to get your feedback on. So you'll be involved throughout this process, providing feedback so that by the time we're bringing you more complete work products, you'll know what's in them and you'll know what to expect.
So the answer is yes. If someone were to suggest a new, if you were to propose a new element to the plan, which isn't there now, that would be brought to us for approval.
Right. And the elements that you've discussed, you know, around the local health, for example, that will be explored with these groups. Concepts and components will be developed and then brought back for your feedback.
Okay, thank you very much. And the very last question, the website as part of the tool improvement priority. Will we get a preview of that website? Is that, I know we've been working on that for a while. Is that just going to sort of show up? Or are we going to preview it, offer comments on any new look and feel capabilities? Just curious about how that's, I have not been involved in that at all. So I'm just looking for an idea about how that'll come out and when.
Thank you, Councilmember Banano. I'm going to ask our Administrative Services Director, Douglas Alessio, to answer that question.
Hi, Mayor and members of council, Councilmember Banano. The website transition was set to occur last March. If you're aware, that's when we got it with the pandemic. It kind of stalled out our transition to the new website. So we've recently been in touch with the vendor to get the project back on track. And it is now, looks like we will be able to transition sometime late this summer. As to whether the look and feel of the website is usually something that would be developed, you know, by staff and not necessarily by council. But, you know, we're prepared to get the project back underway and hopefully completed towards the end of summer and the fall.
Okay, thanks. I wasn't looking to approve the look and feel. I was just wondering if we're going to see it when everybody does? And it's more or less done, just not deployed, and that got sidetracked by the pandemic. So it sounds like it's more or less done, and it's just the deployment that I defer.
Correct. We have about a year worth of updates that need to occur because we're maintaining the old website. So we have, that's what's going to take a little bit of time. So we're almost done, but quite a bit of work has occurred in the past year, though.
Okay, thanks very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
So pursuing the question of the general plan, one of the things that's not on here, or I missed it, either of those things is possible, is those items that we suggested to, the chapters, I guess. In particular, I remember we had a discussion about the work that's been done on the Climate Action Plan, which we did not choose as a goal of priority, and equity and inclusion similarly, because the thought was is that they would be part of the general plan. I just want to make sure that's going to happen, how it's going to happen, how, I mean, I can see the work that's going on with the Climate Action Plan. It's very thorough. I can, I know what's, we'll be coming to you with thoughts on equity and inclusion shortly. Councilmember Carling and I will be doing that shortly. So I just want to make sure that's there. So should I get an answer there, or should I keep going and just sort of give you the full, give you everything at once?
I think it's been, yeah, I think it's been working well to do one at a time. And so thank you for concurring with that, Honorable Mayor. Councilmember Monroe, on your suggested chapters and how we're going to do that, I'm going to let Paul Spence, your Community Development Director, give a little bit more detail on how your feedback, your previous feedback as a council will be incorporated.
Again, this is Paul Spence, your Community Development Director. So certainly, we will be gathering feedback from the council as we finalize the scope of the general plan update. And then in areas where you've done specialized work, such as the Equity and Inclusion Committee, we'll certainly be looking for feedback or work out of that group that may help us as we go into the general plan update process. And again, we'll be doing additional extensive public outreach and also including your committee for the general plan update. And so all of those sources will come together to develop draft policies, draft goals. And those things will be brought back to you periodically for feedback and will be refined and moved forward.
Do you have a sense, never mind, I will hold that question. Second question is around, it's really the communication question around homelessness and affordable housing. No, actually, I'm sorry. Let me go back to the general plan. This sort of, this overlaps because what my question is really has to do with how we communicate around the housing element in the general plan, which leads into affordable housing and homelessness. It's all about where people live and how they live. And I'm wondering, as you're gathering feedback, thoughts on how that's going to be communicated? It's a lot of stuff. And as the last couple of weeks have shown, there's opinions, some of them based on knowledge, some of them probably could use some more knowledge, all the way, you know, from, throughout the community. And it seems to me that making sure that happens is really important. I understand that we're going to be doing that right along, but I'm wondering with regard to the general plan and then into this area of homelessness and affordable housing, any thoughts on that at this point?
So Councilmember Monroe, I will offer my opinion on that before asking Paul to provide additional detail that he has with respect to the update process. I would recommend as the liaison to the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee and also as a partner in the Homelessness Subcommittee, that the council members in those subcommittees seek feedback from both of those groups since those are meeting now before the general plan update gets underway on specific recommendations that those community members and those two groups have for this. I think that their feedback would be very valuable to the general plan update process. And they may not, you know, they may or may not, we can certainly invite them to participate in the general plan update process. But while we have them now, let's ask them for feedback. So with that, Paul, would you like to address more about the community engagement piece of this project?
Sure. So I certainly concur with that suggestion. The other thing I would say is that our, a number of different topic areas will be addressed as part of the general plan update. We will be doing chunks that are related and have kind of topical intersection. And we will be doing some education as part of that, too. So we will talk about, to the community about the regional housing needs allocation, for example, as we talk about housing. So we typically, with any of these components that we bring forward to the community, we'll have an educational component and then a piece where we're looking for feedback and discussion.
Great. And I think that is really perfect. The asking various, the, both of those groups, Equity and Inclusion and the Homelessness Subcommittee, and then the people, the community members associated with those for feedback would be, yeah, that's great. Thank you so much. And I should have started with, this is, this is really wonderful to see. It's wonderful to see this. This is my second go-round on this. And so it's my first opportunity to see work that, you know, the scope of the work taking place over time. And it's very exciting. Thank you all.
Okay, Councilmember Kik.
Just quickly, when is the next time we will, the next time we will see this would be budget time? Because I'm assuming there's no numbers here because it's not. Because I'm assuming there's no numbers here, because it's not budget time yet. But will we see this with numbers associated at our budget meeting?
Councilmember Kik, you will, you, this this work plan is definitely being brought before you, as you as you are noting, before budget, so that it can be incorporated into the budget. Specifically, though, the, you won't see the work plans in this form again until we do our first update on our progress in October timeframe of this year. But certainly, all of this work was drafted in advance of the budget approval so that it could be incorporated into the budget process.
Okay, great, just trying to wrap my head around next steps, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other council members that wish to comment or ask a question? I don't see any, I just want to say thank you for this, very comprehensive work plan. Thanks for all the progress on the previous one, especially in light of us having gone through the pandemic. I think what you wanted was you wanted to, you know, a discussion and direction, do you have enough staff on this one at this point?
Honorable Mayor, we certainly do, thank you very much.
Okay, great, so I think we'll close this item, and now we're on to council committee reports and matters initiated. Then after this, we will go back into the closed session. So we think we start with Councilmember Kik on this.
I typed in all of my committee reports, so I'm not going to talk about those. But I do have a couple questions for staff that may or may not need to be matters initiated, and one actual matters initiated. Just responding to a resident earlier, when will the cap be presented to us? Can staff answer that for us?
Yes, Councilmember Kik, Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'm going to call on Paul Spence to give us, and and you've also have Steve Stewart here, so either one of those, Paul?
You'll actually see that later this fall.
So for anybody concerned about Climate Action Plan, it hasn't come to us yet, we'll see it in the fall. And then
One, before you go on further, you know, I made some comments earlier about how it's the draft, et cetera. Are there any other opportunities to adjust that draft before it comes to us by anybody?
Paul? We are still soliciting public feedback, so certainly, and we've received quite a bit of feedback. And Steve Stewart, maybe you can, I'm not sure when the, you know, the next opportunity might be, so maybe you can help with that for the question.
Sure, Steve Stewart, planning manager here, good evening. So we are intending to take some draft measures to the Planning Commission and Council as early to the Planning Commission as the next meeting in May, which would be the 18th. So if that stays on schedule, that would be an opportunity for the public and anybody to learn a little bit more about the draft measures. Those will then come to the council in their draft form for you to look at in advance as well. And then our staff, based on your direction, is also looking at presenting you with a framework for the electrification in new construction that you had meant, had directed staff to return with. And I believe we're shooting to come back to you with that in the summertime.
So the the specific question was, you say you're taking comment from the public. The question was, will there be a revised draft that incorporates that comment? And if so, when?
Yes, Mr. Spence is correct on that, there'll be a draft that incorporates all the comments we've received. And again, we're shooting to come to the Planning Commission and Council with that in the fall.
Okay, so final on this, if anybody has any comments with respect to that, they should be sending it to whom?
So they can, we have a link on the website, they can send questions to staff. And again, the public can also come to the Planning Commission and City Council meetings to review and provide feedback on the draft measures, as Mr. Stewart mentioned.
Okay, and perhaps, I'll, I'll end it here, perhaps you put on the website when the next draft will be published?
We can do that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kik, sorry, I just wanted to pursue that.
No, that's okay, that makes sense, because it was connected. Okay, two, two matters, one is following up from our last meeting where I suggested that we allow all planning commissioners access to the CalCities training. I was hoping that that could be a matters here, where we allow all planning commissioners access to that training that was not mandatory, it was suggested, and many missed it because they would have had to take two days off of work to attend. It is a video now, so now they can just watch it on their own time, and there's some really valuable information. Is that something that I would have support from my fellow council members for and that we can do?
And so Councilmember Kik, we can absolutely do that. You are correct, all of those sessions have been recorded. And so we will simply put out some information to all of our planning commissioners to note that that resource is available with some links to accomplish that, so we'll have our staff do that.
Fantastic, thank you. And lastly, and excitingly, I would like to add to a future agenda that we discuss raising the pride flag as Amy Rose, the executive director of Livermore Pride, suggested, and declare June Pride Month. It was suggested that it was done in perpetuity, so they don't have to come back every May. So I'm I'm not sure what what that would mean, but if you could maybe investigate what that might look like and getting the pride flag raised, so we can have discussion and direction on that at a future meeting, preferably the next one, because June is coming up very quickly, that would be very much appreciated.
So Councilmember Kik, Mark Roberts, your city manager again. Your policy on this one requires that a city council member request that the flag be flown, so you have checked that box. The next item is that that item would return as a item to be considered. In areas where the, where the request has been granted previously, that would generally reappear on your consent calendar for the next council meeting. That's been our practice in the past. The policy currently states that each of these things essentially need to at least be suggested by a council member each year. And the balance, when the council originally adjusted that, was that times change and that priorities change, and and there are, you know, literally limited months in the year. And there may come a time when the council has different priorities. So you have, you have done what's necessary to have that considered on the council meeting for next time. For this time, it would require agendizing the actual policy to reexamine that. Your staff would be a little nervous with anything in perpetuity, perpetuity is a really long time.
That's true.
Even for those who've been here a long time.
I think Amy has dropped off, but I will be happy to pass along the message that perpetuity maybe is not something we're looking at at this time, but that we will talk about the flag at the next meeting.
Very good.
So under the Brown Act, one other of us can talk. I think what you could think about is perpetuity is putting it on the tickler file. So for that, right, that kind of thing, so that, but the idea is, I think one of the things we saw in this year is that we didn't actually have it on our particular file to initiate it. So I think that bringing it forward for us, for a council member to consider every year is a reasonable way through this.
And I think what we can do with all of the ones that the council has previously approved, we can simply ask the question back out to the council whether they'd like to consider that at a at a coming item. So yes, so that we're not surprised that June rolled around again, that's a great suggestion.
Okay.
Sort of like getting your Christmas shopping done.
And we do encourage that to happen here locally, sir.
Right. So any other matters initiated, Councilmember Kik? And you got enough head nods on on that one?
Yes, I I counted everybody, hopefully I counted correctly.
Okay, good, let's see, where are we going? I forget the order now, is that, Councilmember Carling?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Well, good, that was quick. Councilmember Bonanno.
I got nothing tonight.
Oh, good. Council, Vice Mayor Monroe.
Well, I I'll I'll go and make that three. As with everybody, we all report it out online, and boy, that works really well, so yeah, this is great, and no, I've got nothing, have a good night, everyone.
Okay, I'll I'll mention two things that I think are of interest. One is I was at the East Bay Regional Communication System Authority. And what it was suggested there is that all the member agencies adopt changes to their development codes. So if there's any new development, especially on the fringes of a jurisdiction, that that development be required to pay for the towers or whatever else is needed in order to ensure connectivity to the joint communication system. So that will be coming back to us, and the target date is to get that enacted by us by the end of the this year, to be cooperative, it's a very important thing. And if jurisdictions don't do it, well, then those that don't do it then kind of get a free ride from others. So it's important that we all line up and get it done, so that's an item that will be coming before us. And then the other thing on the Alameda County Transportation Commission, the funds were approved to improve the signage at our rapid lines for LAPT. So that was, there was five million of funds that were available out of some of the measures that were taken, LAPT applied for 2.3 for this project, it got approved by ACTC, and then we'll go back to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And then there's going to be some additional requests coming out of LAPT for the other 2.7 million. So those were significant enough to mention to you all, as well as to the community. Right, at this point, the meeting is over, for all intents and purposes, except we're going to now go back into closed session, and we'll be coming back out of closed session to officially adjourn and see if there's any report out from that part. But for the members of the public, I don't think anything particularly exciting is going to be happening between now and when we will adjourn to the May 17th meeting. So with that, if we, council members will leave this meeting and go to the closed session, and we'll come back.
I have one quick question, can can we have a two or three minute break?
We certainly can, so let's see, 8:41, how's 8:45?
Perfect.
Yep.
Does that work? 8:45 and we'll start again.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back. Do we need another countdown from TB 30 or anything?
No, Mayor.
So we're, I don't need to count down from anybody?
No, TB 30 is no longer with us.
Okay, and we're still recording, so we're good. Okay. We're rejoining our meeting after the closed session. I would ask the city attorney if there's any report out.
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Longkala. No, after the conclusion of the closed session item this evening, there are no reportable action was taken.
Okay, so now we're going to adjourn to our special city council meeting workshop related to the budget on May 17th, 2021 at 5:00 PM. And then we'll be on from after that to the regular city council meeting on May 24th at 7:00 PM, both held virtually via Zoom. So with that, thank you all, and good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Night, everyone. Thank you.